Okay, I'd like to open Mahoney County Commissioners Meeting, Regular Meeting Number Twenty-Six. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Last cheers, all that stuff.
I'm gonna take it, Tony.
See how his arms diggle through here? Well, good morning. Everyone survived the Fourth of July, I see. Or at least everyone that's here survived. God, it was a hot day for parades, too. After all the rain and all the humidity builds up. But, you know, I'm sure that everyone drank lots of refreshments to keep hydrated, so. That's what it, what it, I miss not drinking beer. I don't drink any carbonated, you know, and I always want a beer, so, you know, it's... Anyway, all right. Start off with public comments. If anyone has any public comments, I'd like to address the Board. We ask you to come up and give your name, except for you, you're not allowed to come up. Okay.
Like everybody else.
You don't have Facebook, do you, Terry?
Oh, Facebook, Instagram, you name it.
Are you shooting fireworks off, Terry?
I'll deny it until my dying day. As Terrence Osarko, Louisville, Ohio, One Two Seven East Grand Street, Louisville, Ohio. My other question is, I know it's gonna, you know, I'm not, I don't hate people. I just wanna know, as a taxpayer, how much money did we pay out to Marty Desmond and Mr. Morrison due to the lawsuit? The people that are involved, I don't hate you. You're still my friends. I just wanna know the answer as a taxpayer.
We can't discuss it until it's legally published and... But the county paid nothing. The, the insurance company negotiated everything.
Will our bond, would our bond issue be affected by it?
No. No. No?
It's just, I was, I'm glad this is over with, you know, and and I hope we all learned our lesson.
Well, that's, that's for another time and place and day and time. When we're permitted to talk about it, we will.
Definitely. Take that one to the bank.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the business portion of the meeting. Approval of the previous minutes of Board Meeting Number Twenty-Five from Monday, June Twenty-Six, 2023, and approval of bills for payment. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Advertisement for bids, Patrick.
Morning, everybody. Number one is the advertisement for the Seven Mile Run Culvert Lining Project. This is a large diameter storm saw that runs under Mahoney Avenue in Austintown Township near Meander Reservoir.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve advertisement for bids, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay, agreements, engineers, Patrick.
Commissioners, Letter A is an agreement with Commercial Truck and Trailer for repairs to vehicle number fifty-five in the amount of one thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty cents. These are non-general funds.
Thank you. Facilities, Alan.
B is an agreement with Greenwood Chevrolet for repairs to the two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer in the estimated amount of eight thousand six hundred forty-six dollars and five cents in general fund. C is an agreement with Maroon Mechanical Incorporated for the replacement of two eight-inch main water lines at the Oak Hill Building in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars in general. And D is an agreement with Gene Tessick and Sons doing business as Youngstown Fire and Safety for the annual fire extinguisher inspections at various locations in the estimated amount of four thousand dollars in general fund.
Okay, thanks, Alan. O M B.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Anna.
Jimmy. The subsidy grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections for the community-based correctional facilities and programs in the amount of five million, five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars per the recommendation of the facility governing board.
Okay, thank you. Recycling.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is our agreement with Penn Ohio Corporation to host our, our, our annual tire recycling drives that we have at the Kansel Fairgrounds. It's the first of a three-year contract.
Excellent. All right, sanitary.
Commissioners, Letter G is an agreement with MiniCam Incorporated for the evaluation service of the camera on our TV inspection truck in the amount of seven thousand one hundred nineteen dollars, non-general funds. Letter H is the authorization agreement with H.M. Miller Construction to enter the public sanitary sewer for video inspection of laterals. This is for a natural gas service line. And Letter I is an agreement with the Henry P. Thompson Company for installation and maintenance of product and equipment to complete a twenty-one-day trial of H2S treatment at the Park Place Pump Station in the estimated amount of four thousand dollars, also non-general funds.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Agreements.
Motion to approve agreements, letters A through I.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Change orders, sanitary.
Commissioners, Letter A is an extra work order, number one, with Ohio Edison. This is to upgrade services at the Deal Lake Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of two thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. And these are non-general funds.
Okay, motion approved.
Motion approved. Change orders, three A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Record of bids. Engineers.
Commissioners, Letter A is the Mahoney Western Reserve Road, County Road Thirty-two, Parts One and Two. This is the widening project from South Avenue to Hitchcock Road.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Record of bids, two A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay, resolutions, Commissioners, O M B, Art of Funds.
I'm gonna let Anna do one, so I can take a breath of all the rest of these. I'm gonna do that one for you.
You want me to do that?
Yeah, thanks.
Resolutions approving the First Amendments and Expenditures with the following agencies funded by the American Rescue Plan, Action Inc., a one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Second Harvest Food Bank, one hundred thousand dollars, and Direction Home of Eastern Ohio, fifty thousand dollars.
Item B is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the following township and county engineer for the allocation of road and infrastructure sales tax projects in the amount of one hundred eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, and that's for Milton Township. Item C is a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors of the question of levying a tax in excess of ten mil limitation, Mahoney County Children's Services replacement in existing one point eight five mil levy, and I do have children's services.
Good morning.
Doctor, how are you?
I'm asking, uh, interim director. Yes, we're asking for this increase based on, really, inflation, the needs that the agency has in terms of budgeting, future workforce costs, et cetera, and we humbly really submit this request.
Okay. And, Doctor, I would add that, you know, it's a fallacy, you know, with respect to say an increase. It is and it isn't, you know, we... The, the thing that most people don't understand is that, you know, you vote a levy in, in the year that it's voted, you never pay more than the amount that you agreed to pay the year you voted for it. And as years go on, you pay less because more people add to the coffers that are paying that. So everyone pays a little bit less, but it still generates the same total. So when you do a replacement, it reverts back to the original amount that you agreed to pay the first year from everybody. So it generates more total, but it never goes up more than what you had originally agreed to pay from the day you first voted for it. So it's, uh, it's kind of a twofold, you know? Inside millage stays same, outside millage, there's, there's some, you know, things that change, you know, menacingly, but, you know, as a whole, it, it still stays pretty much the same as what you originally voted to put it in as, so. Something that's used for very good purposes. And, and the one thing I may add is that the state legislature, from what they tell us, doubled the amount of money that they put into children's services on an annual basis, but we're still ranked fifty out of fifty states. So that's how far behind we are. I mean, Arkansas, Louisiana, places I've been to that you would shake your head at, and we're still, we still take care of our children worse than any other state in the United States. I, I won't say we take care of them worse. I'll say that we get funded worse than anyone else in the United States. So to, to put things in a perspective, so, but thank you.
Item E, and I do have a correction. Item E, it's a resolution to cash advance. Did I skip D? Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. Go to D. This is a resolution accepting the in-kind and non-monetary donations restricted for the use of the MCBDD for the installation of a basketball court at the playground area of its Leonard Kurt School in approving the donation agreement. And this is in line with the Commissioners' donation agreement for the playground, for the handicap. And item E is, this is, this, item E is the one where I have a correction. It's a resolution to cash advance funds from the general fund to the COVID-nineteen fund in the amount of two hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-two... Two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars and ninety-two dollars. Don't say a word.
Are you sure?
Don't say a word. Don't say a word. Item F is a resolution approving appointment of Robin Lees to the position of part-time EMA Director and appointment of Andrew Frost to the position of part-time Deputy Director effective July second, 2023. And Andy and Robin are both here.
And we thank you for the team that you are.
Yes.
Just to explain a little bit what it is, is for two years I've been the Director, because of changes in EMS and fire, I'm having to spend a lot more time on the education side of things. And that will be short-lived, but for now, I need to, to address that. So I think the top, the, the county is better served as Robin moving into the Director's position and me stepping back right now. Again, maybe to readdress it in the future, but for right now, in my mind, that makes the best sense, and Robin is, is absolutely willing to do it. So that, that's why I made that request.
Excellent.
Thank you. Two great people.
We're proud to be served by the two of you, regardless of the positions and the titles, you know? We know you both give a hundred percent to, to the, to the...
We are interchangeable, so we work well together and...
And besides, Robin has a gun and you don't, you know, so, we understand. Yeah, but you know, Robin, Robin can run from a hose, Andy can't run from a bullet.
Never bring a hose to a gunfight.
Item G, this is a, a resolution approving the Huntington Commercial Card Accounts to join the consortium of other counties and other county agencies. Right now, our virtual AP cards are in it. Our, we do get a rebate, but this will allow for any of the departments who have it will also get a rebate. Item H is a resolution approving the vacation of a part of California Avenue between Southwoods Avenue into Bartlow Place in Borning Township.
Okay.
I know.
Take a breath. All right. Engineers.
Commissioners, Letter I is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Burgess and Nyple for the Glenwood Avenue Road Diet Project from Western Reserve Road to Midlothian Boulevard in the amount of nine hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and four dollars. These are non-general and a combination of federal funds for this project.
Excellent, thank you. Jobs and family.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Audrey, Nancy, good morning, Jim. Letter J, Job and Family Service Resolution approving the extension to the collective bargaining agreement with Asme, Ohio, Council Eight Local Two Thousand One for thirty days. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. All right, O M B grants.
Letter K is a resolution approving the following community agreements and amounts to assist with local infrastructure projects for public safety and welfare as per Resolution Twenty-One, Twelve, Oh, Fourteen. Coatesville Township, eighty-five thousand dollars for sewer connection improvements. Bieber Township, thirty-five thousand dollars for pavilion improvements. Jackson Township, fifty thousand dollars cemetery paving improvements. Canfield Township, thirty thousand dollars for a digital sign at the Township Hall. Letter I, K, H I J K L, sorry. It looks like an I. O M B grants, a resolution authorizing the one-time contribution of seventy-six thousand dollars from the general fund to O-I-Q extension for capital improvements.
All right, thank you. Lot of good things happening for townships, cities, villages, on behalf of the county as a whole, trying to assist with projects and programs that, you know, they don't have the local funding to do. So it's, it's something we take pride in being able to do this time, so. Purchasing, Jim.
Commissioners, just to approve a vacant possession in the purchasing department. Thank you.
Okay, Jim, sanitary.
Commissioners, Letter N is a resolution approving a moral obligation payment of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-one cents to Alcon Mechanical. This was for ductwork and plumbing services necessary at the main lab located at the Meander Wastewater Treatment Plant. And Letter O is a resolution approving the appointment of one supervisor of construction and maintenance and one sewer jet worker, one for the sanitary department.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Pat. Okay, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve resolutions, letters A through O.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. All righty. And we ain't done yet. So we are very happy and honored that our favorite state representative, Laura McNally, has come to speak to us and give us a little update and tell us what's going on and, and what we should run from and what we should, you know, go to.
You were smart to put me at the end of the meeting now.
Well, you know, we...
I am going to...
Save the best for last.
She asked me how much time I was gonna need. It depends on how much time you guys talk, I think was my response.
We'll, we'll try not to interrupt. We'll let you speak and not us.
We're gonna defer to you on this. You have more to give us than we have right now.
Well, I thought that I would unpack the budget for you, but I will focus on things that are just gonna affect the county, county commissioners, your roles, your jobs, things you guys talk about, because there's so much to unpack in the budget in general. It's a hundred and ninety-billion-dollar budget. It went from the governor's proposed budget to the House, where we put in five hundred amendments, sent it to the Senate. They created a, they took our seven-thousand-page document, handed us back a ten-thousand-page document that had more than nine hundred differences between the two. We got to the best point we could in conference committee, sent it back to the governor, he vetoed about forty things, and we have a budget by our deadline, which was shocking. Shocking because of the differences. There were a couple of big policy things that the Senate put in. The only one we managed to, to get, the House put zero policy things, just kept it funding, that's all the budget should be. They, they stuck in some policy stuff that are important to know. The big one that we got out was basically Senate Bill Eighty-three, which is the higher education bill, takes away the collective bargaining and stuff. So that didn't get in the budget. The rest of the policy changes pretty much did. So I'm gonna start at the top, and I'm gonna do this as fast as I possibly can so I don't bore anybody and just highlight the big things. Biggest thing is gonna be the tax, the tax changes, our income tax. What we settled on at the end was in 2023, we are going to consolidate the bottom two brackets. So you're, you know, if you make twenty-six thousand to a hundred thousand, and then a hundred thousand, two hundred and fifteen thousand, we're gonna collapse those. But then anyone above a hundred and fifteen thousand, we're gonna cut you down to the three point seven five. Twenty twenty-four, though, we're gonna eliminate that, and we're gonna only have two tax brackets, and that's gonna be the big one. This is gonna cost us a billion dollar, two billion dollars. This is gonna cost us two billion dollars. We're gonna cut income tax, so we only have twenty-six thousand to a hundred thousand. If that's what you make, you're gonna pay two point seven five. And if you make a hundred thousand or above, you're gonna pay three point five. That'll be it. Below twenty-six thousand, you don't pay anything, that stays the same. So while we're going to increase the local government funds up to one point seven percent and our local library funds from the one point five it currently is, the overall amount, this two-billion-dollar is gonna cost us, is gonna actually decrease our LFG funds and our library funds. So...
So we get one point more percentage of less money.
So, so you get more percentage of less money, exactly. However, it is codified in law now that you'll be at one point seven percent, so if we can ever change that, I'd be great. The other biggest thing to point out in general, what's the purpose behind tax cuts? Do you think you're gonna bring more people into the state? You're gonna wanna live here. We have had more tax cuts than every other state besides New Mexico over the last twenty years. Ohio's done more in terms of tax cuts. We've lost population over the twen, last twenty years, so it's not working. But we're still trying. In the tax thing, other tax changes, the homestead exemption tax, we index that differently. So that, while we didn't increase the exemption amount or the income threshold, we are going to index the existing twenty-five thousand homestead exemption amount and the fifty thousand dollar exemption for disabled veterans and spouses of public service officers killed in line of duty to inflation. So that'll help a very specific group of people, but it's not...
That's not a fair, that's not fair at all.
So, I know, we try, we have a separate bill trying to help just general elderly.
Right.
So that didn't get into the budget on the, from the House side, but it, it's still a standalone bill. That is the big stuff on the tax side. Those are the two big tax things.
So when is that? Will you have more information on that homestead?
Yeah, I can send you the bill.
Send me the bill.
For the, yeah, for the general...
Who they affect are the senior citizens, over sixty-five. All right, they affect them. And that, that is your voting population all over the state of Ohio.
Yeah.
I don't care what party you are. That's who those people are.
Yeah, we need to...
That needs a change.
We need to, yeah, we need to index that for inflation and, and fix that. But it didn't make it all the way through in that, in the budget process, just the piece for veterans did. In the public safety realm, the couple of places that are gonna affect you guys are the Indigence Defense Fund. We, we, we cap your, we cap your reimbursement of county costs to an hourly rate of seventy-five dollars. And we increased the Civil Legal Aid Fund by five hundred thousand dollars each year. You get a little bit more money there, should, should cost you a little bit less there. Under the law enforcement, we, we put about forty million into training, so continual professional training and a, a law enforcement protection pilot program. So hopefully, we can offset some, some costs there for you guys. The big thing in public safety is around EMS. We, this is kind of dips into Medicaid, though. We increased Medicaid reimbursements for EMS services. What did I say, fifteen million in year one and a hundred and five million and a hundred and four million in year two. So hopefully, that will help. That was the biggest issue we've been hearing locally.
Right.
As well as across the state when it comes to Medicaid reimbursements and being able to afford ambulance services, et cetera. So hopefully, that will help a little bit there. We also, the, one of the big policy things that are going to affect us is the One Ohio Recovery Fund. You know, that's the millions and millions of dollars that came to the state for the opioid crisis. It's supposed to go out to the victims. Public dollars going out to people. This was the settlement money. They decided to make One Ohio Recovery Foundation a nonprofit instead of a public entity, which means that it's not gonna be subject to any type of oversight. Public records requests, you don't have to know where the money is going, who it's going to... That's a big policy problem. Because that's a lot of money to not have oversight over, and it's a lot of...
They didn't vote for that, did they?
Yeah, that's in the budget. So, you know, that's at a time when we're literally the most corrupt state legislature in the country, like the federal government told us so. We just had the big sentencing last week, same, ironically, the same week we passed this. It just leads to more corruption. All right, I'm, I'm giving my opinion.
Power corrupts, absolute, power corrupts, absolutely.
Yep. Here's what, this one's for the Sheriff's Department. The sheriff can use profits from a jail commissary fund to pay for construction or renovation of a jail facility to provide medical or mental health services. So, you know, gives him some leeway there to use his money as he sees fit a little bit better. And I think increases your local jail grants up to seventy-five million for your county jail construction if there's any issues there. That's everything under public safety. That's like the big highlights that are gonna just affect you guys. There's a lot of little things, but I'm not gonna touch on education because there's so much there and not really pertinent to you guys necessarily in your work here. But I will mention one thing. Again, under the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, establishes a new jail facilities construction fund to help counties constructing or renovating county jails. We do have a big problem with the jail down on the County Line Road. I always forget the name of that one. It's a private jail, though. But it's a, it's a big, it's a big problem. So I don't know if there's some things that, I don't know how much oversight you guys have over that or anything like that, but...
They don't have any.
Or that the, no, okay. The transportation budget. So our Budget Stabilization Fund, which is basically our rainy day fund, it's maxed out, it's four million dollars in it. Four billion dollars in it. It's maxed out per state law. You change the state law, so instead, so we can put more money in it. So instead of it being capped at eight point five percent, it's now up to ten percent. So they can put more money into the already very bloated, in my opinion, again...
That they never used when we had, when we had catastrophes to be able to provide. And that's what the, the rainy day fund was initially intended for.
Yeah.
So everything with no oversight.
Yeah.
The state and the governor are doing things with no oversight.
Yeah.
What the hell is wrong with them? I mean, I can't believe that. We have oversight, we can't even move across the street without getting them. And these guys are getting away with murder. I mean, where are our people at that are representing us beside you? Where are they? I mean, Jesus, this is wrong. I mean, Jesus, this is wrong. Then the things that would help the seniors, you cut and you don't revamp?
There are there's a, this is another bad, this is another bad policy change. It all with, uh this one also in the transportation portion of the this budget. Well, allow the Speaker of the House, the Senate President and the Governor to hire outside legal counsel and intervene in court cases whenever they want, um at their own So that's now taking public dollars, cuz the Attorney General is their lawyer, right? Just like the City of Youngstown Law Director's our lawyer. That's the public dollars paying for public funding. Now they're gonna take public dollars and be able to pay for private lawyers whenever they want, however they want. That got in. That again leads.
You're preparing.
Um yes, so we, we did get, uh we did manage to get additional funding for wayside detectors on the, for our railroads. So we made some additional improvements on the railroad side of the fight that were in the positive. But we lost on like the maritime assistance program, which doesn't affect us here, but affects like Cleveland. The, if I go under agriculture, development, natural resources, big things are H two Ohio. We use that funding for our dams, we use that funding for, we've, we've actually tapped into that locally a lot. Cut it from uh from three hundred and seven million to two hundred and seventy million for the two years. That cuts funding to the Ohio Department of Agriculture, the Ohio EPA, Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Big cuts to those departments.
No oversight.
Brownfield remediation. This one is interesting, this one's gonna affect you guys. We maintained the funding for, at the three hundred and fifty million dollars. But we changed it to be lead entities, which means you guys have full control over that. So the county land bank and you guys are the ones who will control any type of grant funding coming in from brownfields. It kind of pushes anyone who has like a city land bank like Youngstown out of the picture. So, you know, I don't know what that's gonna mean, cuz I know that we've got two there for how you guys work together, but I know that that is gonna now be um in your lap. So not a bad thing, just a thing, a different thing.
Well, push the responsibility to a different entity and then cut funding.
Correct. Well, actually, they, they maintain the funding. It's a, it's a good chunk of money.
This fine.
Though, yeah, for the brownfields. We were good there. We had to fight to get it back up. Senate pulled it out. We put it back in. We got it back in and um during conference committee. We did, we did, we had a win on the minority business development. Produce, and on helping minority businesses. On our side, Senate took it out, it didn't make it into the in conference committee, so that was going to do, it was gonna earmark some money to study whether minority and women and veteran-owned businesses face barriers to contracting with state goods and services. This would have been great, but it didn't make it all the way through, unfortunately. We did create a Welcome Home Ohio program. That is a grant program that allows landbanks to purchase foreclosed residential properties to rehab or construct homes for low-income owner-occupied homes. There was, there is a caveat in this one that requires a five-year home ownership requirement, which could create some issues. While the intent I get of requiring so you don't have people flipping homes, it create, it adds a lot of penalties that if it's low-income housing and then you're adding penalties onto people who perhaps need to sell, sell the home, move, change a job, whatever, you're just putting people underwater. But that is something that you guys need to be aware of. I won't talk about the higher ed stuff because again, that doesn't necessarily, however, there's a couple of things in higher ed. We increased we imposed a forty cent user fee for the next-gen nine-one-one instead of the twenty-five cent per device fee that currently is on there. That will, and the effort is to make, make sure everyone's up and um up to co- up to par on the next-gen nine-one-one service, which I think we already have in Mahoning County. The Marx users fees, which if any of our uh first responder units use Marx, the state's gonna pick up the tab on that. That, that was the governor. Governor put that forth, it made it all the way through. So if we are, that's a, it's a, it's a good chunk of savings.
They were pushing that, the governor.
Yeah, I think it's like eleven bucks a radio. But he's pushing Marx, cuz again.
Marx.
We own Marx a- as a state, so. Your oversight problem again. But the.
So that department. And how much do they make in here?
It's the Department of Administrative Services runs Marx. There's some work that needs to be done there, um in terms of just. I, I think it's gonna see a huge influx of users and can they sustain it? Do we set up the the department to take this on? I'm not sure. And I talked about the Medicaid reimbursement stuff. And then some of the big things for the under Health and Human Services. The food banks, we restored their funding. We had increased their funding from the governor on the House side. Senate took every dime out for food banks. We got it back into the House version, so they have their money back. Same with SNAP benefits. We got, we wanted universal free breakfast and lunch for students. They said no, so we got free breakfast and lunch for anybody on reduced breakfast and lunch. So we'll be a little bit of money back in people's pockets that are already receiving reduced lunch or reduced breakfast. Not the universal we wanted. Universal breakfast, only gonna cost us twenty-six million dollars. Instead, they're spending a billion dollars on universal voucher program.
So don't eat, but don't eat breakfast.
I'm not, I'm not unpacking what happened in education, uh unless you guys wanna stay here a little, a little longer. Cuz there was a lot there. Under, under moms and babies and children, cuz we were talking about children a minute ago. We created a new department called Children and Youth Services. This was a governor-initiated idea and it was a place, and so we had a department that sort of had better collaboration and we're all, cuz we had children's services sort of broken up into a whole bunch of different places around the department. So this is gonna bring them all into one. It just transferred all the funding into this that relates to children. And so like you guys now have one place to go when you're talking about children's services or things like that. So it's a Children and Youth Services Department. There's not much for you to know about it, other than now you have like a one-stop shop for your jobs and family services when you're trying to deal with that. We didn't, we didn't get very far on childcare, publicly funded childcare. We got it up to a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level. You can qualify for childcare and we got a little bit of money for capacity building. That's where the problem really lies, is the capacity. It could be up to an unlimited amount of federal poverty level, but we had no capacity. So we really need to invest in that, but um that's what's gonna get people back into the workforce. But we didn't quite get to where even the governor wanted. He had originally set a hundred and sixty-five percent of federal poverty level. We went up to three hundred. The Senate took it all out and then settled with us on a hundred and fifty. There's a pattern here, the problem's in the Senate. Completely cut the Healthy Beginnings at Home program, which helps moms and babies in their first year where we would actually do home visits. You know, we have the highest infant mortality rate specifically here in, in Youngstown. We have that per capita and then our state as a whole is in the top. Less than that, like the top three for infant mortality rate, unfortunately. And it's even higher in the African-American community than in the white community, but it's still pretty high in the white community too in Ohio. And so we'd had a whole bunch of programs like Medicaid covering doula, doulas, that got cut. Healthy Beginnings at Home, where we would have actual home visits to moms in that first year, that got cut. We did get um anyone, continuous Medicaid coverage for babies zero to three years. So regardless of what happens with the parent's income, if you're between the ages of zero and three years, you never fall off Medicaid. If you are on it when you're born, you can keep it to three. Tried to extend it a little further, had to settle on three.
What if you're not, what if you're not on it when you're born?
Then it's just, if you, if you get on it in between that three, zero to three, then you keep it till three. Regardless of what happens with your parents' income. We tried to get moms included in that, at least for a year. That didn't work out, though. A big thing right now, local entities like you guys or the cities have ability to regulate tobacco products. However you guys see fit, state took that away. They want full control over regulating tobacco products. I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily good or bad. We're pretty strict in our area. I think it was the governor wants to regulate tobacco products more and that's why he did it. Um and that was one of his veto things, actually, I think. That's the really big, oh, the healthy aging grants. I think I talked about those before when I came here. Those, we got back in during conference committee. Governor initiated one-time funding forty million dollars for healthy aging grants. Um and that can be used for a variety of things to help the elderly age in place. That money will go directly to you guys and you guys will disseminate it to the entities that will do the projects. So that goes to the commissioners.
And how's it divided, forty million?
Um I think it's a, I think it's a, there's a I can't remember if there's a funding formula or if it's gonna be a first-come, first-served grant program.
We're getting two ninety.
Is it a funding formula? It might be a funding formula. That would make.
I think it's coming here at two ninety, I think.
Okay, I can double check and I'll let you know if that's a funding formula and what.
So it's not, it's more divided equally then, because two ninety is, is less, we're in the top seven in counties.
I think it'll be equal.
If we're not getting at least a half a million, then it's not divided, you know.
I'll find out for you, exactly what that is.
Anything there that's divided equally.
There was, yeah, well.
Is it based on population? Is it based on the census?
I would think it'd be based on population and income, but I don't know. Let me ask on that. How, if we just we don't decide how, we just decide to give the money. So let me find out the how behind that. Um and that was a, again, the governor proposed it, House kept it in, Senate took it out. We got it back in during conference committee. But again, we just sort of put that money there. Let me find out how.
Did they do anything with the children-first councils? Children and family first?
Not that I know of.
So that stays.
Yeah. Uh okay, so that is all of like the big things that I think are gonna affect you guys directly. A lot of little things. But
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you for that. I, I also, why don't you give an overview of this, this election? I know, but I wanna hear that. This forty mil- three million dollar election we're having in August. Tell me a little bit about what's in that bill, so people can actually understand what they're voting for.
Okay. Um let me try to do it.
I mean, just hit the highlights.
So the election in, right now you can change the Constitution two ways, state constitution. A legislature can change it by putting up ballot initiatives or the citizens can change it by putting up ballot initiatives. The rules are essentially the same right now. Uh as a state legislator, we wanna change something on the ballot, we put it, we, you know, we pass a law, put it on the ballot. Requires fifty percent plus one. Same with citizens, equal, equal power. Historically, the citizens have only done it dozen times. State legislature's done it a hundred times. August eighth, we're gonna vote to change the way citizens can change the Constitution. Not the state legislature, we'll still have, be able to do it under current laws. Where we just pass a bill, it goes on fifty percent plus one. However, the citizens now will have to gather signatures from all eighty-eight counties. Right now, they only have to gather signatures from half. They will be, there will be no cure period, which means if you don't have the amount of, right now, if you don't have the amount of signatures, when you turn your signatures in by the deadline, you get like a ten-day safe zone, where you can go collect more signatures, cuz you didn't have enough. That goes away for the citizens. And the ballot initiative that the citizens are putting on will require sixty percent supermajority to pass other than the fifty percent plus one.
So it'll be sixty plus.
So it will create a scenario by which it's not one person, one vote anymore. And it'll create a scenario by which the minority group is actually in control, because that's now harder to do anything. So that's what you're voting on. The, to change if, so if you, to change the Constitution, the citizen-led ballot initiative will require sixty percent to pass, plus be harder to get on in general. You're gonna have to have a lot of money to put forth a ballot initiative. Why do citizens use this tool? Because they use it when the state legislature won't do what they want. Right? It's your power, it's your voice. This is your constitution, this is your state legislature. If we don't do what you want us to do, then it's your right to go put out a ballot initiative and force us to do what it is you want us to do. So it's a checks and balances thing. We're not gonna make it harder for you to check and balance us. We're not gonna make it harder for you to, we're gonna make it more costly, we're gonna make it nearly impossible for you to get it passed. So that's what you're voting on August eighth. You, you lose your voice, you lose your, your personal power in the state of Ohio. When this was a bill in the House and in the Senate, hundreds, hundreds of people, Ohioans, came down to testify against doing this. Ohioans. You can go online and you can see every single one of their names who did it. It's all documented. You can read their testimony. Then you can see all the people who were proponents of this, who testified. None of them lived in Ohio. None of the proponents were Ohio groups, Ohio people. That's a big red flag.
So what are the, some of the things that follow this bill? Are there some of the actions that they, they wanna put into it that would hurt the average Ohio citizen?
Well, if you just look at who was, who came out in support of the bill, in support of the, the initiative, it was the Restaurant Association. What are they known for? Not minimum wage, not unions, not worker rights. They're the ones putting forth the rollback of child labor laws. They're the ones who always fight against a minimum wage. So it's not gonna be good for the workers. Them, the Ohio Business Chamber, one other business entity, large business entity came out as, like, less than twenty-four hours after it was voted on, came out in support of this August eighth election, changing the Constitution to sixty percent. That's what you gotta pay attention to. Who's supporting which side? Not what they're trying to bill it as, not what the marketing spin is on it.
So you would say that SB five might be a part of this bill if this passes?
Oh, it's a definitely a foot in the door, just like the rollback of child labor laws is a foot in the door to rolling back fair standard labor practices. That's, I mean.
How about our minority population? Are they affected by this bill?
Oh, how could they not be? I mean. Oh, how could they not be? I mean, they
Is that still, is that portion of the bill still in? Were they actually affect the minority population?
Well, it just, it just becomes harder for the minority population to be able to stand up for themselves because they, there's less of them. There's less, you know, and you need more now, right? Um, so they can't fight for their own rights anymore. Uh, or something, if something like this were to pass, it's also gonna affect redistricting. That's gonna be another thing we lose. Fair constitutional redistrict maps if
I mean, we voted seventy five percent to get rid of school funding on the backs of property taxes. We voted seventy five percent to get rid of the gerrymandering and it all went back to the, to the courts and they refused to do anything, you know, because they control the courts too and it just sits idly. So even the things that we pass, the initiatives that we favor as a, as a, as a state, population wise, it falls on deaf ears and we don't hold the people that control it accountable.
Right. And we have an unprecedented super majority at the state legislature and that doesn't happen often and they're definitely able to take advantage of that and do the things that give them more power by taking away our
I wonder if, uh, we can put a ballot initiative on, you know, like, you know, when you get counties that, um, wanna turn from an elected entity to a charter and you, and you change, I wonder if we can change the state from Senate and representatives to a charter and form of government as a state and eliminate the people in charge.
I mean, after what Wisconsin did, after what Wisconsin's governor did, yes, two days ago, oh my God. He, uh, anything is possible. He line item vetoed a number in a dash and funded public, by doing that, he funded public education in that state for the next four hundred years. It was unbelievable.
What do you mean?
You can line item, you can veto words in Wisconsin's state law. So the governor vetoed, instead of vetoing like a whole line, he can just strike out a word.
Strike out words.
So he struck, because he wanted to fund public schools. They wanted to secure their place in public school funding. Um, you know, for infinity, he just struck out a zero on a line and a, and a dash that changed the entire sentence to now be where public schools are fully funded for four hundred years there, you know?
Well, I kinda liked it. I think the most important thing right now with the state of Ohio, and I mean all of us, D's and R's, everybody, is we need to get our people out to vote.
Preserve our rights.
We have our rights at stake. When you only, when they, and I don't mean you, please don't misunderstand. When our state people that we elect could go there and get fifty plus one and we have to go ten percent more plus one? Wait a minute. We need to get it, we need to wake up. We need to wake up our people to go vote. We, honestly, you're taking everything. And next thing they're gonna take is county government money and we're gonna tax all of you because there's not gonna be any money left. And I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, you, fortunately, the people vote on everything the county government does, money wise.
Well, I mean, state funded money coming here.
Well, you know,
I mean, they don't need to do anything.
They, they, they take, take, take. We've lost over twenty million a year now, so.
I know. It's just sad. I mean, it's absolutely bad call.
It's already, it's already, uh, been in, in effect.
You hurt everybody, from the poorest of poor to the richest person. I'm sorry.
In general, we had
I've never seen it like this.
a missed opportunity with this budget. You suspend in feast years to get through the famine. This is a feast year. We have unprecedented amount of one time money from the COVID relief fund. We have a huge rainy day fund. We just passed the gaming tax. We increased that in the budget from ten percent to twenty percent. We have more money in that gaming tax fund and we haven't even tapped into it yet. I mean, and we're spending nothing of it. And so we've cut funding.
So what are they gonna do with it? I mean, is it gonna be, oh my God, look at my bank account.
Using the gaming tax to pay for the universal vouchers. Because they actually changed the way, right now you're only allowed to use the gaming tax funding to pay for extracurricular and sports activities, inters classic. They changed it to be all education things, so they can pay for their billion dollar charter school.
Lauren, do they put anything in infrastructure for communities to do projects?
That was all under the transportation budget from
Is there more this year than last year? How was it? It was funded?
They funded a lot more this year. Um, it was a record high transportation budget. Um, uh, we passed that in like March.
Tell them they enjoy Sutton, get that portion ready to pull their ball. I can't feel.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Lauren, thank you very much. We appreciate all of your
Thank you.
There you go.
They're recessed till September, so
Till when?
I'm here. September.
September?
September, yeah.
So that they could lobby the ballot initiative?
Yes. So, uh, yeah, so I'm in the district if anybody needs a meeting or anything like that.
Well, we may have a big one soon, but I mean, I'll talk about that later.
Nice stuff over here.
Well, thank you too.
All right. Well, with that being said, anything, Ed, please? Carol?
Motion.
I already said it. Thank you. Everybody had a great time on the Fourth of July, a lot of nice parades. We thank all the people that worked so hard to put them on. A lot of work goes into that. We thank you. All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, no call.
Commissioner Emilio Legati?
July.
Commissioner Emilio Legati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavicanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Detsch.
Yes. Next meeting is July thirteenth, twenty twenty three, same time, same place, same
True.
bat station.